Okay, good evening, everyone. I've got the triple thumbs up from the tech people. So I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Emig?
Present.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crable? Oh, sorry, we're doing him remotely. Apologize. Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
And Mayor Milowambway?
Here. And remote attendance has been requested by Councilmember Crable, who is away for a family emergency.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin and second by Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Correctly this time, yes. Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
I.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Crable, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thanks, everyone. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, we can hear you fine, thank you. So I know from time to time I tend to forget that we have somebody else on the line. So don't hesitate to, you know, to chime in if you need to, you know, to say anything, okay? Like chiming in right now would be good. Say yes.
Yes, yes, I will chime in when needed.
We're gonna move on to recognition and appointments. And we do have a proclamation for National Healthcare Decisions Day as requested by the Administration Department. And it's my understanding that Chaplain Kristen McNeil is here to receive a proclamation. So if you wanna step up to the podium while I read the proclamation. And then I will give you an opportunity to say a few words afterwards if you'd like. And then we can do the nice photo op with the proclamation if you have somebody taking pictures, okay? So a mural proclamation for National Healthcare Decisions Day. Whereas National Healthcare Decisions Day is designed to inspire and educate the public about the importance of advanced care planning and empower the public to research advanced care planning resources. And whereas National Healthcare Decisions Day presents an opportunity to begin the important conversations and to seek out resources which clearly communicate a person's care choices and who can speak for them when they are unable to speak for themselves. And whereas this day promotes the importance of adults making these choices at every age to ensure their wishes can be followed by their healthcare providers and those who matter most to them. And whereas one of the principal goals of National Healthcare Decisions Day is to encourage people to add advanced directives to their care plan with their physicians, care teams, medical groups, hospitals, health systems, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continuing care, retirement communities, hospices and community organizations. And whereas the state of Illinois provides the specifics for healthcare directives and allows individuals to choose a healthcare agent and to make care choices on the individual's behalf if the individual is unable to speak for themselves. And whereas Car Health is assisting community members to be more in charge of their health, decide what care choices are best for them, understand how to choose a healthcare agent and use advanced directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas cities within the Car Health Network have endorsed this day and are committed to educating the public about the importance of discussing healthcare choices and executing advanced directives. And whereas April sixteen, twenty twenty-three will be recognized as Healthcare Decisions Day in our community, more people will have conversations about their healthcare decisions. More people will execute advanced directives, making their choices known. And healthcare providers will have better ability to follow through on an individual's care choices utilizing the express guidance gleaned from the individual's participation in advanced care planning and completion and advanced directives. Now, therefore, I, Mboka Milowambway, Mayor of Bloomington, do hereby recognize April sixteen, twenty twenty-three as Healthcare Decisions Day in Bloomington, Illinois, and call this observance to the attention of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you for this and bringing attention. And I hope each council member has an advanced care plan for yourself and will bring attention to your family members. Because if you don't have a plan at a time of an emergency, then it becomes an emergency, right? And every adult should be able to make a plan and have it in paper so that it's known to your loved ones, so that everyone knows what your decisions are. So thank you for bringing this to the attention of our city and for allowing us to draw attention to this very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do. First off, we did not receive any emailed public comment prior to the meeting. And we have no one registered to speak remotely, but we do have two people in person. The first will be Scott Steinling and then Gary Lambert to follow after your statement.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of views. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Thank you.
All right, first up Scott Steinling and then Gary Lambert to follow.
Scott Steinling. This past weekend, it was Friday after five, the the drains started to, the rain came down and the drains could not handle the water and the street flooded again. It was, there are two drains across the street, one in front of my house. And I've been after this city and after them and after them. Do please put a four-inch drain beside that four-inch drain. It doesn't make any sense to rip it out and put an eight-inch drain in there. One drain, four-inch drain, cannot handle the volume of water that comes down that street, that hill. So consequently, the road flooded again. If an emergency vehicle would have had to get down there, they couldn't have done it. And there's no excuse for that. On another issue, the curb line is level with the grass in certain places. This is no sign, this does not speak well for the City of Bloomington. It'd been a whole lot less expensive to do these, address these when they were first brought up several years ago. But terms were a heck of a lot lower and so was labor. But I forgot, it's tax money, it's free money, isn't it?
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lambert. Last week, one of the local radio stations had our city manager on. Down Normal recently eliminated the vehicle use tax. And that was one of the topics that was discussed. Sales tax, this is from their article. On Bloomington residents raises about 1.3 million a year. And some Bloomington council members suggest the city do the same. City manager said he wants to educate council members about what the money raised can be used for. Well, we just saw recently an example of that education. We get a motion that was voted down when the city manager was absent. He didn't like that. Came back. I assume had discussions, some of the city council members. And two of them, after their education, changed their vote. We know what the accepted level of taxation the city manager wants. And that's all he can get. On the maintenance facility, there's an item coming up tonight. And it's recommending that you reject it because bids came in too high and it gave a bunch of reasons. The request or the estimate was, the bid came in forty percent higher than the estimate between January and February. I would suggest that they did not go up forty percent in one month. Lastly, we've got a request coming in to add an assistant city manager, another one. And he stated, being the city manager, that how he has improved operational efficiency and oversight and some internal restructuring. What I'd like to see is what the body count was when our city manager took office and what it is now. Because it seems the more revenue comes in, the more staff we had. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay.
I can double check it or we can just allow him to come and speak. It might be easier. Sorry about that. Yeah, no, I apologize if I missed it.
First, thank you for the quick audible.
If you'd start with your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Zach Carlson, Ward six. I got the email. Really quick, just wanted to talk about a couple of things I saw on the agenda and a few things that are happening around town. First, on the consent agenda F, this is the drones for police departments. We're doing three drones for a hundred thousand dollars with the goal of fiscal strong neighborhoods and with the objective of feeling safe. That's in the notes. I hope all you saw that. I just want to state that that doesn't actually prevent crime. The grant that we got for this was for crime prevention. Drones don't prevent crime. They only help catch after and that's if you get them up in the air right after. That's not how this works. That's not prevention. And feeling safe doesn't objectively change safety either. A feeling is a feeling. It doesn't change the objective conditions that we live in. On top of that, I saw not too long ago that the sheriff's office wants to work with BPD to get their own SWAT team. None of that says safe to me. I don't feel safe with drones around. I don't feel safe with additional SWAT around. It is unnecessary and the sheriff has even said it. He doesn't need it. So when the agreement comes before BPD, I would recommend that you first shoot down the sheriff. Not actually, but shoot down the deal. And strike F from the consent agenda to, obviously just strike that altogether. Which kind of brings me into my next point is that we just displaced at least six homeless folks for no good reason. And that doesn't say safe to me. Gleason claims they offered help, but according to Home Street Home Ministries, they offered nothing. Nothing. It's in the GLT article from a few weeks ago. They were kicked out for simply conversing with people. That was the first claim. And then they became aggressive. Says who? When do they become aggressive? Can I just claim that my neighbor is aggressive and get them kicked out of their home? Any of you? That shouldn't be how a living situation works. Not to mention they are right by services, not near downtown, near Home Street, Home and the Junction, near the new Eastview Community Center. So what I'm getting at is that it shows where our priorities lie as a city. We want to buy fun items, we wanna buy toys, but we don't wanna help people. Which I think is a huge misunderstanding and a totally poor way to run services meant for people. So I just wanna come up here and express that and say let's refocus our priorities. Let's actually help these folks who are who knows where now and do better going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. And I did just wanna apologize really quick. He was registered, so I apologize for missing that.
Okay, not a problem. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And I believe, Madam Clerk, you have a couple of edits to make.
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
Minor, I think.
Yeah, very minor. So to the first one, item seven A. That item is a set of minutes. And on page eleven of the minutes, Councilmember Crable pointed out that there should be a statement at the end of one of the comments that he made. And I do agree with his comments. He, the line read that he'd like to add, encourage the city to add additional inspectors. And so he just wanted to say so that we could get caught up on inspections of city-owned properties. So we would just add three words at the end, city-owned properties there. So I'd ask that when the motion comes forward, if you would do that as amended for seven A, please. And then the second one, actually, our mayor recognized that there was a date in item seven O. And that item, and that item is the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. That one, the public hearing that was held on that, it's stated in the minutes, that's page one fifty-eight as March twenty-third, and the public hearing was held on March twenty-seventh. So it's not material in terms of the resolution that's being brought forward, but we did just wanna point out the error. Thanks.
Sounds good. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
All circled.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Ward and then second by Councilmember Bowlin. Okay, and we have a link.
Councilmember Ward, will you refresh for me? Thanks.
No, Ward. Okay, so the consent agenda passes. There are no nays to announce. And now we're gonna move on to the regular agenda with item eight A, a consideration and action on the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and appropriation ordinance as requested by the Finance Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and to the community. This is actually a very exciting evening. As everyone knows, the community has a fiscal year that operates May first, April thirtieth. So we are coming to the end of our FY twenty-three budget. And before council tonight is the proposed adoption of our FY twenty-four budget. It's exciting because this is a budget that I believe captures the vision of council, captures the desires of the community. You know, we're in a period of more and we're very fortunate that as a municipal organization, we can deliver that to the community. Something else that I'd like to share is the scrutiny that we talk about being stewards of taxpayer dollars. There's no greater scrutiny than what we place on ourselves as city staff. Scott Rathbun is the Finance Director, Chris Tomerlin in the back row next to Chief Simmington and the entire staff, the directors leading their departments. It's something that we take this very seriously. And we hear this very clearly from the elected officials that we work for. And truly an exciting evening, just thinking about all that we're going to be able to provide this community. A process that truly starts, you know, for Scott and his team, May second. You know, and for the deputy city manager and I, and then it grows within the organization. And by late summer, early fall, we are full-blown preparing for the next fiscal year. All the while assessing the current fiscal year as we work through that. So truly an exciting evening. You know, gratitude and appreciation to Scott and his finance team. And before I turn it to you, Scott, deputy city manager has been very involved in this as well. Like to allow Billy a couple of minutes for comment.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And really, I'll be brief. I just, I was thinking back to a couple of years ago when COVID hit. And this, the city manager recommended, and more importantly, this council decided to make the decision not to limp through COVID. I think those were actually the words that were used to continue to build and plan for that day when, while COVID's not over, obviously, that we return to some sense of normalcy. This budget builds on that decision instead of having us have to basically start from scratch. It covers a multitude of different things. It covers the things that cities are known to be responsible to do. Water and sewer improvements and critical functions like police and fire, it covers those things. But it also does more. It continues to build the local quality of life. I was in a meeting the other day with the manager and others where the question was asked, describe where the City of Bloomington is now, or describe the current condition. And the answer was, it's fantastic. We continue to grow and people continue to choose us as a place to invest and to build their business and to come and live. You know, recent census numbers indicated that we had some level of minimal growth over the last ten years, ten, eleven years, whereas other communities throughout the state did not. So I think that says a lot about us and quite frankly, a lot of the work to make that happen, happened with you all as a council in terms of the decisions you had made. And so we're proud of this budget, as Tim said, as the major said, it's an exciting time. It covers the basics like I talked about, but it also, you know, covers major projects that you all have gone through some public discussion over the last several years to make happen. You talk about the work with Locust Colton and the associated drainage basin, working to address funding, flooding issues. This budget continues to cover that type of work. One of the complaints that we get often, and you know it, is when are you gonna do something about the roads? Well, this budget does more than we have perhaps done in ever. I mean, I can't say that for sure, but you know, it's doing ten million dollars, it's proposing ten million dollars in roadwork. And when you combine that with our current year and what will be proposed over the ensuing years, we're projecting, if approved by council, upwards of sixty million dollars in roadwork. So it does the basics and it does more and addresses the issues that the public has said that they expect from us. And so again, we're very, very proud of this budget, not to steal any of Scott's thunder. But again, it took a lot of work and we appreciate that work, Scott.
Thank you. Tough to build on that as far as an intro goes. It's hard to imagine it was just six quick months, short months ago that we started this process. I mean, literally, it's like six months on, six months off, six, but we're doing the budget year round as the city manager mentioned. So tonight, we're pleased to present the adoption for council. We'll be recapping some of the same slides that we've went over previously. I'm a strong believer, you know, although it may be boring and redundancy when it comes to going over these financials so that we build understanding with the structure of the city and the use of these dollars. First, I wanted to comment quickly, though, on the location of these presentations. It's been changed slightly from the last month. We've had the city's website updated. So if you can see in the lower left-hand corner there, the presentations, the monthly presentations and all the FY twenty-four presentations are now located on the finance page under annual budget documents FY twenty twenty-four. And just a quick note to council, there's a couple of slight edits on some of the descriptions and some of the slides, no material changes from what was sent out previously, just very immaterial changes, but we did update a couple of items. Next slide. So in recapping, the largest citywide budget that has been presented at two hundred ninety million, a twenty-one million dollar increase over the prior year. But as you can see, for capital projects, we're nearly seventy million in capital projects, and that's an increase of twelve point eight million. So the majority of that increase for the citywide budget is made up of those capital projects. There's some other variances and other funds within the financial structure of the city. But the library and the arena kind of make up about seven million dollars of those other changes. The library experienced the grant related to a state grant for their expansion is coming in in FY twenty-four. They're gonna be, that's gonna be a contribution to their reserves. That's shown as an expenditure, believe it or not, in our budgets. And then the arena, we have a full budget for the entertainment division. And so that's a gross up of their expenditures, even though there's offsetting revenues and that accounts for the remainder of that. The general fund, one hundred twenty-nine million, that's forty-five percent of our citywide budget. The general fund is the largest fund of our financial structure. We'll be going through some of the details of that in a moment. And general fund, fund balance, the reserves projected, this is a kind of a moving number as we proceed, you know, through finalizing FY twenty-three. But right now, you know, for the end of FY twenty-four, we're looking at dollars in the mid-middle forty million dollar range. And this provides us, as I've mentioned previously, the flexibility to have some larger discussions about fire stations, downtown, streetscaping, the fleet garage, which is a need, you know, for our mechanics and the needs of other funds, some of the funds that, you know, like golf and Lincoln Garage that can't, that have trouble supporting some of those larger capital projects. And then the other highlight on this page, paying cash for equipment. Weaning ourselves off, using borrowing for our rolling stock, the general fund has been paying cash for at least three years now. And you can see that there's a drop in interest expense on those exhibits when we get to those. Next slide, please. This exhibit, we've gone over several times. This shows the budget growth. It's trying to kind of drill down into what a net growth looks like for the city from twenty sixteen up through today, after adjusting for capital projects, which can vary from year to year significantly. And we have strategic additions such as the McLean County Health Contribution and the non-recurring items such as American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So this exhibit shows that we've been roughly growing at approximately three percent annualized rate since twenty sixteen. Next slide, please. So our major tax revenues, the general fund is primarily funded by tax revenues. These are driven up and down based on the economy. So that's why we provide a lot of scrutiny on these revenues versus So that's why we provide a lot of scrutiny on these revenues versus water sewer storm, which are more fee generated and usage and consumption generated. So for FY23, we're projecting a $13 million positive variance. We've been discussing that at, at the monthly reports. But for FY24, we do believe that some of those revenues will stay elevated. The economy is still running pretty hot, but we're only capturing about a $5 million increase versus a $13 million variance that we're looking at 23. So trying to be conservative going into 24 with the projection on those revenues, but still recognizing that there should still be some residual increases going into the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So the general fund, general fund, parks, rec, public safety. We'll be going through some of those categories in just a moment. But the largest fund, what I want to highlight here is, you know, we have been fortunate related to major tax revenues and some of the positive direction that they've been headed. And so you can see our use of reserves, we are targeting to use $3.4 billion. And if you look to the right in the notes, and we're utilizing the majority of that to assist some of our other enterprise funds for taking care of what we have. And then also, we're doing a million dollars for streets and sidewalks for this coming year. $2 million will be utilized for American Rescue Plan Act to kind of hit our $10 million target for asphalt and concrete. But we are committed to hitting that $10 million in the future years and utilizing the general fund to subsidize asphalt and concrete. The tax line, you can see that seven point, almost $2 million increase over the prior year that the previous exhibit showed, including the levy, about 6.9 million. We don't include all tax revenue items on that exhibit. And so you can see kind of the, the connected dots and our financial structure are related to some of these numbers. And then a next one thing I'll highlight, which, you know, is just a fortunate occurrence. You know, the interest rate environment, you can see an investment income, you know, we had a budget of $160,000. That's all for FY23 and we've budgeted 1.8 million and we might be light in that, that line item, but a $1.6 million increase in interest income for the general fund. You don't want to make plans based on interest and investment earnings when you're talking about public funds, but, but we'll take that, as I mentioned previously, we're fortunate to have that occurring. Next slide, please. A general fund expenditures, just to highlight, you know, three, three categories here. Salaries, we've talked about an increase in staff, there has been an increase in staff. This 3.6 million, just wanted to highlight a couple of items, you know, for, for staff, for inspectors, rental inspectors, building inspectors, you know, boots on the street out there taking a look at the assets in the community. And then to human resources, staff additions, a recruiter and a training officer, retention and recruiting are challenges for all business, all people, all companies, municipal governments, et cetera, and we are not exempt from that. And so taking care of the people that we have and try to recruit more to be able to provide the services to the community. That's been an emphasis here strategically, you know, initiative within the city management. And then the principal expense and interest expense, you can see that that's decreasing, it's $300,000 decrease for a principal and $43,000 for interest. And that's related to removing ourselves from borrowing for equipment. And so those, those leases are rolling off and, you know, this number will get smaller, a reduction. But, you know, it's coming down every year, what we're spending on, on interest. So we're being able to fund those, those purchases with our cash reserves and the cash and the tax revenues that are coming in. And then you can see the transfers out, 2.9 million, this is associated with the subsidies that, that I explained in the revenue section. So we have a use of reserves, you know, we're showing that, that revenue, you know, it's not real revenue, it's, but it's a use of reserve, so we're balancing our budget, showing the use of those savings. And then here in the expenditures, we're showing those transfers going out to those other funds. And I've described this previously, is this kind of doubles up our, our budget somewhat because we have a transfer out of the general fund, transfer in using Lincoln Garage as an example. And that will show revenues as a transfer in and then utilizing those funds at Lincoln Garage for the capital project. We have that double up whenever we're doing subsidies and transfers. Next slide, please. So the general fund, the general fund by function, because it is, it is the largest fund. It's 40 some percent of our entire citywide budget. And this highlights the kind of the by category, you know, where are these dollars being utilized? And kind of highlights some of the, I guess, the more, what I'll refer to as the direct touchpoints with the community. So you can see for public safety, you know, public safety is a large concern, obviously. You know, $64.8 million for police and fire. Public mental health, you know, the McLean County Health, that's for public mental health services, 2.9 million. Public transportation, almost a million. Quality of life was mentioned by the deputy city manager, you know, $15.1 million for parks and rec, you know, so that's, that's almost $84 million in what I'll refer to as kind of like direct touchpoints from the general fund expenditures. And then to highlight the right side of this exhibit, a lot of these departments do have offsetting revenues, police and fire, ambulance fees, towing, that resource officers and parks, you know, charging for the zoo and the programs. So you can see, you know, net of their revenues, you know, the parks department goes from a $15.1 million gross expenditure down to about $11.3 million. So we present our budgets in terms of total expenditures, but I just want to highlight, you know, there is offsetting revenues related to some of these departments and categories. Next slide, please. And then we move on to the citywide, so this is all funds included, but just giving some perspective. Use of reserves, use of fund balance, $43.7 million, a $10.7 million increase over prior year, you can see some of the categories where we're utilizing reserves. Again, reserves, you know, accumulated savings so that we can address capital projects more efficiently. You know, accumulate those reserves, execute those projects all at once. Investment income here, you know, $2.8 million citywide increase over prior year. You know, we'll take that as I mentioned previously. Next slide, please. Citywide expenses, 5.2 million, we just highlighted 3.6 million of that was for the general fund. We have 5.6 million dollar increase for contractuals. You know, some of that is due to inflation, but also, you know, the arena with the entertainment division basically really coming back online. We have a $1.3 million increase related to, to that activity, you know, artist fees, et cetera. Capital expenditures, you know, you can see the $10.8 million increase. In the, in the notes, it shows the 12.8, that's the overall capital projects increase, but not all of that is included in that line. We have design and things of that nature that are in the contractuals line. So our capital projects are split up a little bit from a general ledger standpoint. So just want to highlight that. And then transfers out, you can still see, you know, these are the subsidies, what I was referring to previously with the general fund, the transfers out from a citywide basis. Next slide, please. And then the citywide by fund, it's a, it's a complex financial structure I've indicated previously. We have 29 funds, you can see the general fund at the 129 million, a 6.8 roughly million dollar increase over the prior year. The library, about 3.2 million, most of that being a contribution to reserves related to that state grant coming in. I'm a highlight capital improvement, asphalt and concrete, a $3 million increase over prior year. And as I mentioned previously, our commitment is to, is to hit that $10 million capture that amount in our out years, our future years as part of this budget and sourcing those extra funds from the general fund going forward. And then the arena fund, a $3.5 million increase. A big, like half of that is related probably to the entertainment division, but we have had an increase. The rooftop unit project was budgeted in 23, it's rolling to 24 and it's being increased. So, you know, a $3.5 million increase in the arena fund from prior year. Next slide, please. The capital projects, you know, FY24, 69.7 million, a 12.8 million dollar increase, asphalt and concrete, just highlighting that $3 million increase over prior year. Significant dollars in capital projects for water, sewer, storm, et cetera. Next slide, please. So winding down the presentation. We are going to adopt, basically adopt the budget into components this evening. A council member, E-Mig, in her role with the museum, we, the city contributes $45,000 to the McLean County Museum, so we were pulling that out officially for the appropriation. So the adoption tonight will be 290 million, $89,570, highlighting the general fund because that contribution is part of the general fund as well. But for the appropriation, it's going to be the 290,089,570. Next slide, please. And where can all this information be found and further understanding about the budget and how our financial structure is organized? It's all online, we do have hard copies of the proposed budget at the, at the hub and library. Just to give some context about the budget books themselves. The budget book number one is really related mostly to the general funds, a summary of revenues and expenditures. But also has, if you look at the third bullet, there are department fund narratives. These are descriptions and highlights from all the various departments. What we accomplished in prior year, what we're looking to accomplish in the coming year, challenges, material, you know, statistics, if there are any for a department. And the second book has our debt information related to bonds. But the most interesting part is really, there's a lot of information about our capital projects. All the detail sheets are, are located there in that second book. And then if you look at the last bullet, we have the budget video series, there's a PDF or PowerPoint. I think it's a PDF that goes along with that, that you can just read. Our annual report, our audit has a lot of good information as well, and all these can be found on the city's website. Next slide, please. So a lot of detailed information and trying to capture, you know, some of the highlights. I think the city manager and deputy city manager did a good job of that. You know, as I mentioned, it's six months of effort to pull this all together. Tremendous effort by council, staff and the community, it's really an all hands on deck kind of thing. But we think we're producing a strong budget, things that will impact the community directly and just highlighting some of the, those items here. You know, if you combine asphalt and concrete and the state motor fuel tax fund, I mean, that's nearly $37 million related to road and street and sidewalk infrastructure. Over $20 million in water and sewer infrastructure products for delivering those, those key services to our community. And then of the 69.7 million, of the 12.7 million, taking care of what we have, you know, facility maintenance, quality of life for parks and rec, you know, even trying to address some of those more forward thinking components like environmental studies for solar and EV, you know, so trying to, you know, hit, hit the, hit the components that will really hopefully impact our community. And then the other highlights, you know, we are funding the public safety pensions at the 100% target. That's 12.3 million of our general fund budgets related to public safety pensions. If you've seen this number, 7.2 million for cash for equipment for the general fund is 100% funding for our cashware equipment. And then some, some items that we went through during the proposed budget related to your budget, the community's budget dollars were, you know, 89,000 police and fire service runs that occurred in the last year that they captured the data for. You know, over 1,000 miles of sewer and water lines are maintained, 4 billion gallons of water provided annually, 17,000 tons of trash and recycling, all this, 34 million pounds. And then adding up all the visitors for parks, attendees, cultural, you know, BCPA, library is 600,000 visits and attendees, you know, that, that the budget's going to be addressing. So, you know, hope is, you know, this really has a very tangible, direct impact on the community and that everyone sees that their, their, their dollars are being put to use. And our ultimate goal, as the city manager mentions, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' funds with this budget. Next slide, please. Two minutes. So having said that, my recommendation is to adopt the FY24 budget as presented in the amount of $290 million, $89,570. Next slide, please. With that, we'll take your questions and or comments.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Very efficient presentation. We're down to two minutes, I think the two minutes are what's left, right of your present. Okay, thank you. So questions from council members, so we have Councilman Walsh, Montney, and then Olin and Ward and Crumpler.
And you can add.
Yeah, I didn't forget about him, I was thinking about it the whole time.
All right, could we put page 14 up on the slides, please? I have a question on this page because I'm confused. Are we really spending $36 million this year on streets and sidewalks?
No, that includes the state motor fuel tax fund as well, so that's the 26.7 million motor fuel tax. So that's the Fox Creek Road and Bridge Improvements, Hamilton Road up on Street to Morrissey Drive. So basically, if you, if you kind of combine it into roads, street, sidewalk, infrastructure in total, that's, that, that's the 30, 36.7.
Okay, so when we get into the bridge replacement there on Fox Creek, the whole building out a brand new road for Hamilton Road and, and the acquisition of land and, and the railroad rights and all that stuff. We get into $36 million, but in reality, we're spending, you know, if you take that away of what we're doing new, we're spending $10 million in asphalt to, and concrete to, to streets and sidewalks.
Yes, correct.
How many mile, how many lane miles of, of road would that be this year?
Awesome. There we go. That's going to be tough in any given year to be able to describe that accurately. And this is ground that Kevin Cothee, our public works director, Craig Schonkweiler, the assistant have described in the past. So when we bring before council the needs and the condition of our roads, you know, it might be a resurfacing, which is a thin letter layer that sort of protective coating that gets us much more. We might have a complete road replacement, which you're going down four, six inches worth and it's obviously going to cost more and you're going to do less. So it's difficult to answer that question with a simple, you know, total miles.
Okay, um, thank you. Moving on from there, O'Neill Pool. It looks like it's a wash 500 in, 500 out on there, but with that not opening this year, it's not going to happen. Where, where are we just writing that as a wash in there? Why do we still have that in the budget when we know that's not going to happen?
And that's part of our April 17th committee, the whole presentation is just sharing an update on the O'Neill Pool. And that's something that truly was a very recent decision with all the involved stakeholders. So we're going to update the community next week on that project. But we had held on to hope up until mid, late March that it was going to be open.
Thank you. And then page five, please, of the slide presentation. Thank you. I'm confused here. You put a plus 1.4 million for the police and fire pensions. Are we, are we actually putting an additional 1.4 million in than what we normally would have? Or are we meeting the obligation that we had said in, in the council had set years ago and saying, we're going to meet this obligation this year, this year, this year, et cetera? Or is this an additional 1.4 million on top of that this year because of the increase in the assessed value?
I have to answer that kind of in two pieces. This particular line item is just related to the tax, the tax revenue increase. So 1.4 million of the full 7.2 million tax increase was related to the levy being increased. So that, that 1.4 million on that line item is just related to the tax increase. The 1.4 million of the levy went to fill, we had a $1.8 million hole related to the actuarially determined contribution to keep us on the 100% target by the year 2040, the 12.3 million. So there was a 1.8 million dollar hole related to restricted revenues from the levy, utility tax, and then a small replacement tax component. So the 1.4 million went to fill up the 1.8 million. So it wasn't in, it wasn't to increase the contribution, it was to have the funds available for the contribution.
Okay, so we're saying we had a 1.8 million dollar hole when we've got a $7 million surplus in the budget?
That's, I would not, that's not a $7 million surplus, that's a $7 million increase in tax revenues.
But down on the bottom in our total, in our total revenue, we're adding, we've got 7 million extra in our general fund. 122, well, that's from last year, 122 to 129 million. Where, what's, what is our projected increase in surplus for fiscal year 2024?
We are actually anticipating, if you look at the top line, we're anticipating using 3.4 million of reserves. So we're actually reducing our reserves. Of reserves. So we're actually reducing our reserves in twenty four. So the correlation between that increase in revenues, you'd have to go to the expenditure exhibit. So if we went to the next slide, please. There's a six point seven million dollar corresponding increase in expenses related to the increase in revenues. But three point four million of that increase in revenues was related to, well, that, that was the total. Six hundred and thirty thousand was an increase in the use of reserves, but we're, we're actually talking about using reserves next year. All things being held equal, if the, if the actuals come in exactly like the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, um, that last conversation, are you saying that we would have not met the required pension funding requirements? For the police and fire, had we not made this change?
No, I mean, the, the city's commitment is to fund at a hundred percent. So we, we were low, and then by utilizing the levy to make up that hole, it freed up revenues. Um, to address other things like roads and sidewalks. So if we had not done that, we, we would have still sourced revenues, but we may not have been able to do other things.
So just processing that for a minute. Sounds like what I'm hearing is that we, um. We can moved the obligation to, uh, this tax levy, um, and then redirected the funds that were freed up toward other things. And if that's the way it is, I, I, you know, just, just let me know that. Um, I know, as we've discussed before, I left with the impression in December that we were increasing our contributions to the public safety pensions by the amount of the EAV as per seeing the, um, plus one point four on many of our documents. And it sounds like, um, maybe there's a footnote, but that might not be exactly a correct understanding on my part.
Yeah, i- i- if it, if it came off that way, I apologize, but, uh, the exhibits that we presented during the levy, um, showed the twelve point three million dollar contribution. That was prepared and calculated by our actuaries to keep us on track for the hundred percent funding target. And then the revenues related that we had restricted that we were expecting. And then it showed a one point eight million dollar deficit. And then there was a, a secondary column that showed what the deficit would be if we were to increase the levy by one point four million. So we would still have a deficit of around four hundred thousand. And that would be made up from the general fund from revenues. We'd have to source that and, and manage our budget accordingly, so that we could, um, fill, fulfill that con, that obligation. So my, my communication back then, what I recall was, if we, if we don't increase the levy, we'll still make the contribution. But we'll have, it'll be one point four million dollars less in the general fund related to subsidizing other funds, uh, for their needs such as asphalt and concrete.
So was that called out at all by the auditing firm that, um, reviews the pensions for our, um, funding process? I, I haven't read the full report, but in preparation tonight, I did pull it up to see, you know, was there any, um, flag, um, indicated that we had a shortfall that we needed to, to address through capturing this additional tax?
As, as long as we make that contribution, there's, there's no flag that's created related to that. I mean, it's just that the communication is we have certain revenues that are restricted for, um, pensions.
Right.
And in the past, like back twenty sixteen, we had extra funds, we were setting aside extra funds, so we had a reserve built up. We started being short a few years ago, and I communicated that to council, that we were utilizing reserves, that utility tax reserve. Um, to fulfill that contribution, there was gonna be a point where we were beyond that. And we were gonna have to address it at some point in time.
Well, it's my impression that others left with that, um, belief as well. Uh, I'll set that aside, though, but I do have some other questions about the budget. Um, just starting even with the context shared tonight, that it's exciting that we're in a period of more and talking about the quality of life that we're investing in on behalf of our residents. And the first thing that that causes me to do is just step back and reflect. Is that our definition of where we are, or would our residents believe, um, from their perspective? They are in their households in a period of more, and the quality of life that they would like to have for their families. Um, you know, is, is it from their perspective as well? Is that how they would see things? And, and that's more of a rhetorical question. Um, as I look at the budget trends over these last few years, um, a, a person that owns a home some years have to buy a new roof. That's a capital expense, um, but they can't back that out of their, um, total financial situation and kind of grade themselves differently on that. They have to balance and find balance in capital expenses and, and saving for things, um, that they need to do. Uh, that certainly applies to us as well. You know, when I think about the people who live here, I mean, one thing that we could do to improve their quality of life would be to allow them to keep more of their own money. I mean, as we look at things like utility tax with built-in inflation riders, where we have the benefit of allowing our operations to receive a three percent increase by charging our customers more year over year. So stepping back again and, and just following up on some of the points that were made earlier and talking just for a moment about roads. When we talk about roads, we talk about them in terms of how much money we're spending. But I believe that we can link that to what we are getting for that spend. I, I think that's a gap in how we're running our operations today. And yes, I agree with the city manager that there's a high degree of variability. And a high degree of variability exists throughout work being performed in all kinds of environments in every department. Uh, but we still have to have a framework for understanding and managing that. I mean, as we sit here tonight, it's, you know, we're a week or so after, um, seeing news reports in our neighboring area that the community of Pekin has chosen to spend seventeen million dollars on their roads over this fiscal year coming up. Um, and I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, or that the amount we're spending is right or wrong. But what I am saying, and this anchors back to twenty three months now of being on this council. My starting point in our earliest meetings, which is we need to create a framework for managing the operations that creates transparency into the work that's getting done and align our resources around that, so that we can answer the questions emphatically with confidence if we are accomplishing more at the same or less cost. I continue to see that as a gap, and I think that gap I will continue to bring up. Um, because I believe it's unambiguous in its opportunity for us. You know, with that, um, you know, one other thing, um, and we're gonna talk about this a little bit later, but, um, you know, when we look at feedback from our residents, and I can only speak to the ones who call me and share concerns about their perception of city operations and things of that nature. Um, we have opportunity to improve in things like trash pickup in downtown Bloomington. All of us received a note about that in the last week or two. And the same thing with brush and leave pickup and our routine operations along the way. So getting at those things requires us to look at how we do our work differently, and I don't see that factored in here. Um, and my last question really relates also to the, uh, comments that have been made previously about getting back to our twenty ten staffing level. In my experience, to know how many people you need, you need to know how your work is being performed and what work you have to be performed with precision to develop a model. My last question for you relates to that, the comments along the way about being at the twenty ten headcount. Um, tell me more about how that was arrived at and what analytics support the needs for staffing at that level.
I'll jump in on this one. Um, I stepped into the organization five years ago. And, uh, we would have been, uh, post-recession, um, the, my predecessor, uh, cut the organization. I think that there was a need to do that, uh, and that's, uh, the reference to the, uh, twenty ten number. So over the course of, uh, the five years that I've served here, uh, the first year or so, we actually, uh, combined department. You may never agree with this, and I respect that. But you get to a point where you shift, you take in the input from the elected officials, from the community. You're trying to meet those needs. So in doing that, and in adding over the course of the last three or four years, uh, after that first initial assessment and some reduction, uh, my first year, uh, on the job here. The best thing that we do is communicate every single step of the way, why we are doing what we are doing. And that has satisfied the councils that have approved the decisions that I've presented every step of the way.
All right, thank you. Um, I think we're down to three minutes here, and we have what? Still have one, two, three, four people who would like to speak.
Mayor, I'd move another ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, okay. All right, uh, local, right?
Councilmember.
Ten in addition to what's there.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Walsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emei.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thirteen. So we're done. Next.
I, I'll just close by saying my two primary concerns are adding seven hundred thousand each to the public safety, uh, pensions. And again, I may be a complete outlier, but that is what I inferred from the conversations in, in, uh, December. And secondly, the lack of sustainability financially of the trends that we're on as it relates to the budget.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bolin.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Scott. Um, I appreciate you going over this many, many times, because every time you do, I learn and see something else. So I really appreciate that. My major concern going forward, just like the item that was in the, uh, for that facility out by the lake. Labor materials is gonna go up and up. And my concern is that many of these capital projects will suffer and definitely affect the budget. So I just wanted to throw that out there and ask if you have any thoughts about that.
Well, it, it's difficult to see how high prices are gonna go and, and if things are gonna stabilize. I think there's a compounding of things or supply chain issues, but everything's just still really hot, too. So contractors are still, you know, not interested unless, unless you pay for a higher amount. So, you know, there's a hope that it's gonna stabilize and, and normalize. Uh, you know, I've mentioned that, you know, you can't control expenses, but hopefully you can manage them through the short term. And this is, that's an example of managing expenses by, you know, seeing if we can put off or, you know, utilize other resources. Buy some time, if you will. Um, so if, you know, you know, we, we, we have to take a snapshot in time for the budget related to the plan and which projects we can address and what, you know, we hope they're gonna cost. If we start going down that path and, and we, we see that prices have sustained at a higher rate, we'll have to readdress, reprioritize, and, you know, look at our available resources. So it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, eyes on constantly kind of operation, but we're, you know, that's, that's what we do anyway.
Okay, but, yeah, I'm just, if you think things are gonna go up thirty percent, I mean, that's a possibility.
Um, it's, it's.
Let's, you know, let's say the, um, the flood control stuff. You know, it's budgeted at this amount, but it's actually gonna cost maybe thirty percent more. Would that come out of the reserves, or would it then be moved down the road at some point?
Well, that, that's, that's a good question slash point. I mean, one of the benefits, not to put a target on the reserves of the general fund, but, you know, you know, what the, those larger projects are in the enterprise funds. And one of the benefits of having that nice reserve balance in the general fund, especially during this environment, is to kind of be a backstop for that other activity. So, um, kind of like we've, we've discussed, utilizing some cash from the general fund for Lucas Colton and saving interest expense for those funds. Um, that could be elevated a level, I guess, to addressing cost increases. It's, it's just kind of a weird environment, and I think, you know, Genie, the library, you know, there, there, it seems like their costs are coming in pretty close to what they were expecting, you know, it's, a lot of it's locked in and stuff like that, but I haven't heard from her, you know, any rumblings from the contractors, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I, I guess my point is I'm, I'm still remaining hopeful that, you know, there's gonna be stabilization uh, related to some of this activity and these price increases.
Well, well, there were several in more, too, that have been on the back burner. And I, I really, and even the flooding stuff, I don't want to see that, you know, put off to another year. If at all possible, I'd like to make sure that, you know, major things like that move forward.
Well, I, I think there's, you know, just like the, the items coming before council tonight, you know, there's always gonna be that opportunity for council to weigh in and help prioritize. So, you know, with this particular situation, I mean, Kevin could speak to it, but there, there's flexibility within this, this plan, you know, that, that can be utilized. Some other projects are might not be that flexible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward.
Thank you for all your work on this and for leading us through this and giving us guidance. Can you clarify just a couple of, of things for me? Um, the ten million dollars for asphalt and concrete is primarily for repairs and, and maintenance, right? As opposed to new projects? And the other, the other twenty six point seven, was that, is that number right? Um, is, is for newer projects, right?
The twenty six point seven for motor fuel tax.
Yeah.
That's, those are two, the two large projects, right? Like the Fox Creek Road and Bridge and the, and the Hamilton Road. Um, I don't know if I have a split between new versus repair and, uh, on the road component.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess in a way it kind of depends on how you define new versus repair, you know, I'm not sure for.
But the long and the short of it, the long and the short of it is we're spending upwards of thirty five million dollars on roads and co, and sidewalks.
Right.
Okay.
Again, just clarifying, because that was a question before, we wanted to make sure in full transparency that, that component, that large component is the state motor fuel tax fund.
Okay. But we get to decide how to spend that, right? Okay, so we're spending it. Um, the other, the other point that I want to just clarify, um, the water, sewer and storm. What we're, what we're spending on that comes to about twenty point three million dollars?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so roughly twenty five percent of this budget that's proposed is for capital projects. Roughly twenty five percent of this budget is for public safety, right?
Right.
So we live in a community. We are not a bunch of individuals. We are responsible as a council for spending the money of the community, for taking care of the community, because we are a community. And we have got to get out of this individualistic mindset. Yes, the rain falls on the rich parts of town and it falls on the poor parts of town. But you know what? It has more of an impact on certain parts of town. And because we are a community, we have an obligation to attend to all parts of town in an equitable way. And I support this budget because I believe that it goes a long way toward that. And we need to get rid of this individualistic, this worship, this idolatry of the individual and recognize that we are a community. Thank you for helping us to get to that place. I move adoption of this budget.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yeah. Let's see, we have Councilmember Crumpler. I'll take note that you, you're making a motion, but go ahead.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Scott, I wanted to thank.
Interrupt real quick, could we get a second to the motion and then move forward with this?
I have a second.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So it's been seconded. All right. So, um, Scott, I just wanted to thank you, um, you and your staff providing early drafts, comprehensive budget books and continued updates on the FY twenty-four budget process. And I want to say key for me to understand that process has been listening to the diverse views of my colleagues um, on this body as the budget moves forward. And I've really learned a lot from these discussions and greatly appreciate all of them. Um, overall, I see evidence of, of responsible fiscal planning, priorities for improvement and investment in the future of this community, and I will vote to adopt this budget.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Crable?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I'll try to be quick and not too scatter shacked because I took a bunch of notes. Um, but yeah, thank you to Scott, Chris, the whole financial team. Thank you to all the directors, Billy and Tim, um, uh, for all the work on, on this. Um, and, uh, and again, just to highlight, um, you know, we're spending sixty-four million on public safety, seventy-five million um, on, um, on, uh, infrastructure. And I think I saw we've been spending fifteen million on parks. Um, so just to go to show what our, what our priority are, what our priorities are. Um, and then, um, you know, with regard to staffing, um, I, I, I think that, you know, how it's increased since two thousand and ten, I think you can compare that with road. Um, you know, looking at some past statistics, you know, we, uh, you know, we were doing, we're doing basically nothing for road improvement around that period of time. Um, and so that's increased only to ten million. We expect staffing to increase at, at, at that time, at that pace as well. Um, I think staffing increases matches the initiatives that we've approved. Um, you know, and I know our residents appreciate all the infrastructure that's being done. I know my residents, for instance, in Eastgate appreciate the acceleration of the Locust Colton project and also other member, uh, other residents of the city with regard to, um, you know, with, with regard to the water basin. Um, and, uh, and I think, um, and, and again, going back to Scott's point, uh, since two thousand sixteen, the budget's only gone up three percent, uh, per year, which is a very reasonable amount. Um, and then with regard to the, uh, police pension, uh, fire pension, I don't think that was ever a discussion uh, with regard to increasing the amount because we already, uh, pay a hundred percent and we only have to pay ninety percent for pensions. And as I mentioned in one of the prior meetings, if you take the last nine years, uh, that extra ten percent, um, it equals sixteen point two million. Basically, we were, what we were doing is increasing the tax levy, how much we were paying towards pension. Because previously, we all, you know, back last year, we, we, part of our property tax levy goes to pension. So we were increasing, uh, you know, that amount. And when you look at, you know, what, you know, what do our residents feel like we're on the right path? Um, and I think you, uh, you know, I think you look at the elections and that shows you that people do believe that we're on the right path with expanding our library, um, you know, doing something very, uh, important. And, and on the west side with the O'Gale Pool and starting to improve our downtown street skate project. So a hundred percent support us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think we had a motion and a second, and at this point, we're ready to vote. Okay, so the, um, item passes, there are two nays to announce.
Uh, Councilmember Walsh and Councilmember Montney.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Scott, for all the work that you've done. It's, uh, tremendous, uh, coming back here. What, how many times? Six, seven, eight times? Uh, so want to thank you and you and your staff and also City Manager Gleason and staff for all the work you've done on this. Okay, so next item on the agenda is item eight B, consideration action on an ordinance, amending the budget ordinance. And I basically will call this the Julie Imig item, right? Amendment? You're very important when you have an amendment named after you.
I'll motion that we approve that item as presented.
Okay, second, um, discussion, please? No, okay. Ready?
We can go ahead and put it up.
Okay, the item passes, there are no nays to announce. The Julie Imig amendment has passed. You are a historical figure. You know that. Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight C, uh, a consideration and action on an ordinance approving a site plan and a special use uh, with a variance to allow a restaurant use with a drive-through in the B one, uh, general commercial in B two, local commercial district or property located at sixteen oh nine West Market Street as requested by the economic development and community development department. City Manager Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before I turn this over to the Economic Community Development Director, Melissa Hahn, I guess I would, I just wanted to share something. She'll speak to the specifics of, uh, this project and development, but I want to, uh, I guess speak to and celebrate the process itself. Uh, this is not development for development's sake. Uh, the Plan Commission receives this first, uh, and, uh, they did their due diligence and saw, uh, some issues or some concerns, uh, that was passed on to the developer. Uh, the developer, uh, uh, was very supportive, uh, and heard, uh, those, uh, concerns that came out of Plan Commission. Melissa and her team, uh, took this and, uh, turned this into a project that's before council this evening, uh, with the recommendation to adopt, uh, this communication that's occurred, you know, back to, uh, the Plan Commission, uh, what had occurred with the developer. Uh, truly, uh, think that this is, uh, a process, uh, that worked. And again, uh, would like to, uh, celebrate that along with, uh, uh, you know, running aside, uh, Melissa's presentation where she's gonna actually talk about specifics. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Council and City Manager. Uh, we're very excited to, um, have before you this evening this ordinance for a site plan with special use and a landscaping variance to allow a restaurant with a drive-through at sixteen oh nine West Market. Um, as the city manager mentioned, um, the reason this item is on the regular agenda is because um, it did not receive a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission, how it was originally presented. After that Planning Commission meeting, um, the petitioner went back and provided some modifications to the site plan to address, um, the concerns that they heard from the Planning Commission. Those modifications include removal of five parking spaces at the west side near the vehicle, um, entrance to the site to improve vehicles exiting. Um, they're also adding the drive-through bypass lane. And that was originally, they had requested a variance, um, to not install that bypass lane, but they have now installed the bypass lane uh, to their site plan, and that completely removes the need for that second variance. They've added a pedestrian connection, um, to the site from Locust Street. They've also added a six-foot tall wooden fence to the eastern edge of the site to provide additional screening from the residential area. And, uh, with all of these modifications that they have implemented, the Planning Commission has been notified. And we've received no, um, opposition, um, expressed from the Planning Commission members. And then I will just say that approval of this ordinance will result in continued private investment on our west side that we're excited to see. And with that, I'll open it to questions.
I'll motion to approve this item as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember, uh, Montney, and then second by Councilmember Ward.
Are there room for comments and questions?
Sure.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for your work on this, and I'm, I'm thrilled to see that this, um, this is coming forward. Are there any other coffee shops in Ward seven as far as you know?
Not that I can think.
I can't think of a single one either, so it's about time because people in Ward seven need some coffee. So I look forward to this one.
And hopefully more to come.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
I, yeah, I have a question about, uh, the, the floor plan is not included in the packet. Uh, what is the seating capacity?
I don't know that I know the full, um, seating capacity. Um, I believe we do have, it is twenty-two hundred square feet in size.
Okay. Um, I did read the packet, and I understand that Starbucks has a standard of parking around forty, um, spots, um, with six to eight employees. Usually those Starbucks have a seating capacity of about fifteen. You know, the one on Washington Street. I, considering that that area, and especially on the west side in Ward seven, has flooding issues, I would prefer to have all the parking spaces removed on the, um, near the entrance. Um, I know there's a motion and a second, but I do strongly believe there should be a condition that those part, all the parking spaces are removed. That would leave thirty-four or thirty-six. And that that gray infrastructure be replaced with green infrastructure so that there's permeable surfaces. Um, I don't know what the, the, what Alderman Ward and Alderman Montney think about that, but, um, I, I would like to, I don't know what the procedure would be, but I mean, I would ask what they think about that. I'm in favor of the development. I'm concerned about the, you know, the traffic flow, although it was approved by I-DOT. But I am concerned about so much gray infrastructure in an area that doesn't have good, um, help me, Kevin, what's the word? Um, it has, it has poor, um, there's a, like a floodplain issue, you know?
So the, yeah, in the stormwater detention, that's been accounted for. So in the site plan, you know, is that's being approved, that, that's been accounted for.
But that's in that little section where the five spots were removed? I mean, where is the detention base? And I didn't see it on the site plan.
So the detention that's being provided in the area that they have, I mean, that's part of the review for the site plan approval.
Okay.
So that is accounted for.
Okay. Well, I would like to have some, you know, feedback, uh, from the people that made the motion, um, to see if they, what they think about this suggestion.
So it's my understanding there are only thirty-four spots to begin with. Is that, is that not right? Because that's what it says here, thirty-four parking spaces. So if, I'm not sure how many you're talking about removing, but, um, I would not be in favor of that. The, the location of the site is different from the, the Starbucks on Washington. Um, it's right near the interstate. I could imagine people wanting to, um, get off the road and go to the bathrooms, stretch their legs and so forth. And, and it's a different location altogether than the, the Starbucks on Washington. Um, so I could see people needing those parking spaces more than perhaps the other location.
I think the thirty-four, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Melissa, the thirty-four parking spaces are to the east, I guess? I mean, in the larger section, um.
So the code required that they have forty-four before allowable reductions. And so with those allowable reductions for things like public, public transit, bike parking, like we allow reductions for that. Um, that would be down to forty-one spaces. So they're, they're going to come in now and remove those additional spaces in the front of the five spaces. They also need to accommodate staff, right, for their, their employees parking. Um, and, and so my concern would just be that with this site, there's not gonna be a lot of opportunity for on-street parking. And we also wouldn't want people to park, you know, illegally, you know, where there, where there isn't parking available.
Okay.
So in response, I support, um, Councilmember Ward's comments. Um, I agree, um, that we should leave the spaces. I think you summed it up well in terms of people pulling off the highway there and also needing parking for all those people in Ward seven who would love to have a place to go get coffee.
Right.
Uh, Mayor, if I could comment, or do you need me to make a motion? At least, or?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Jeff, and then we'll go to Councilmember Urban.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Um, so my two, I guess, main comments, um, you know, I, I'm not sure, uh, you know, the, the developers seem to be pretty quick after the Planning Commission vote to say, yeah, we'll put in a bypass. Um, but when they presented it to Planning Commission, they said, hey, you know, this is gonna make it infeasible. We've gotta talk to FEMA. Um, so I'm just wondering if you could have pushed before the Planning Commission meeting, push a little bit more on the bypass, getting, getting approved. Secondly, uh, just a little bit concerned about the process. Um, because as I understand it, the Planning Commission, they have the public hearing, they take evidence in, and then we vote based on that evidence. But in the last couple of times, I'll add on the, uh, Hirsching-Hamilton sidewalk crosswalk. Uh, since the Planning Commission, we see, appear to be getting additional evidence. Um, you know, uh, both from the developer, um, both, and then even just, you know, being told that Planning Commission members are, uh, you know, agreeable with, you know, with, with these changes versus maybe the proper process of sending it back to the Planning Commission to get their, uh, approval. So, but, uh, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Urban?
Thank you. Um, so my first question, Melissa, did, did Planning Commission or staff actually go out to the site and look at the site?
Yes, staff actually go out and look at the site.
Okay, and they, there is an access road right next to this corner lot. And this is the road, if I'm not mistaken, that they could not negotiate to get access for people to go in there. There is nothing to keep people from actually going in there when, when you drive out there. Um, it's not unusual to sit out there and watch people just go straight across and after they've gone over to where the Chase Bank sits, then they go, oh, wait, I'm in, and then they're turned back around to traffic. One of the things that I don't want to see is traffic backed up on Market Street while people are waiting to pull into the slot. Um, and, and so that, that is definitely a concern as well because, you know, as much as I, I agree that I would like to pull in there and get coffee, if the line is all the way back to Hinshaw, I'm probably not going to be very happy because I'm, I'm not gonna be able to get through. So I, I definitely have a lot of concerns about the traffic flow and the fact that they didn't even want to put a bypass lane. So lots of red flags for me. And, and that concerns me because I have been, I went out there and looked at it because I was like, you know, what, what road were they talking about between Chase there? So very concerning. Um, and I, but I also want to bring back, you know, like Donna said, this is a lot of gray space. This is a lot of concrete. You know, and, and I get that we need concrete for most things. But if I'm not mistaken, Julie Imig and I both, um, we're very driven to more green space in our plans. And I agree with Councilmember Bowlin. We kind of are taking that, you know, previous agreement that we needed more green space, and we're throwing that aside to create a traffic jam on one of the most heaviest driven roads out there. Um, and it seems like we're creating possibly more of a problem than a solution, and I'm quite concerned actually about it. So if I sit here and I go, yes, you know, I want Starbucks, which I, I do. But let's be honest, I'm a huge coffee fan. On the other hand, I could be inconveniencing a lot of people. Let's stop and think about the fact that Washington Street's still closed and we're still rerouting all that traffic out there. I realize we're supposed to get that one open. But we kind of, I, I don't want this to become hindsight is twenty-twenty, right? So, I have a lot of hesitation. I think that if the motioner and the seconder are willing to amend and say, let's clean this back up and put some green space in here where people can stop and stretch their legs, take their dog over to the green space, let them go to the potty, whatever they got to do to take care of their business, I'd be a little bit more inclined to say yes. But my knee-jerk reaction right now is I would have preferred to have sent this back to planning commission and let them have another go look over it before they, before I put a rubber stamp on it. So, I'm not going to rubber stamp it unless we can get green space put back into here to allow for those people. And hopefully, we won't have so many impatient people that were stuck in traffic for forty-five minutes just to get to our destinations. So, that's where I'm at. I, I either need the green space and the ability to function and, and some more ability, send it back to commission, or I, I might just have to say no. And I'm sorry for that because I'd rather have the coffee, but not at the expense of hundreds of people.
I was just going to ask, how does that impact, you know, their ability to, to do things? And my concern is where it seems like there's a, there would be a lot of moving parts, you know, when you're, you're telling somebody, okay, reduce the space. And so, I'd rather for that to be looked at a little bit more, if that's the direction that we want to go as a whole, you know, and not to just make a decision today right here and say, hey, this is the condition, the, the developer's not here to.
Yes.
Sorry. Hey, nice to meet you. Okay.
So, just procedurally, I'm not a hundred percent that we have a motion to amend on the floor. We did have Councilmember Ward and Councilmember Mermontney who do have an active motion on the floor, say that they were not willing to amend their motion. I'm not sure if that's changed. If Councilmember Bowlin, your intention was to make a motion for the amendment and Councilmember Urban, you were going to second it, we would take the amendment first, make a decision on that, and then go back to the original amendment by Councilmember Ward and Councilmember Montney. So, just for procedure, there's, that's where you're at.
Sure, go. Can I ask a question of, of you? How?
Hold on for a second, Jeff.
Yes. So, I think Councilmember Crable raised a, a good point of not bringing in new testimony.
Okay.
So, we have had a change in the proposal, and that's not new testimony. That's not new evidence.
We have had a change in the proposal, so I think it can be considered as revised.
But I think as far as if you want to add more evidence into the mix, that would need to be sent back to the planning commission.
Okay. Sorry. Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend. I, I think, I think the primary purpose of this is a drive-through for people to, that might be coming off the highway to get their Starbucks fix and then get back on. And if all they're doing is going in to stretch their legs and use the restroom, you know, okay, they can park, but they're not going to be sitting there in the parking spot for an hour as if you were going in to eat. You know, that's my point. And even people that go in to the restaurant to pick up a, you know, a muffin and a coffee are not really going to necessarily sit there for very long. And I don't know what the seating, how many seating, what the seating situation is, but I do know in the other Starbucks in town, there's a dozen or fifteen seats. So, having thirty-four parking spots or thirty-six, whatever the number is, in that larger area of parking should be adequate. I'm concerned about the flooding. I'm concerned about, yeah, I'm concerned about the traffic flow too on Market Street, but that's a whole nother story. So, I would like to make an emotion to amend, to remove the additional parking spots on the, would that be the west side of the, by the entrance?
You're saying by the entrance to remove those as well. And I will just add, I, I mean, it was included in the packet, but this has to be reviewed by IDOT as well. So, there's been additional oversight there.
Okay.
Because Market Street is, I, you know, IDOT's jurisdiction. So, they've reviewed and approved the original and reviewed and approved the modified, you know, for, for their business model. You know, they've got a, a standard amount of parking. It, it's been reduced, you know, due to our accommodations because that's our goal, you know, with the, with the zoning updates that we did is to reduce some of that parking and allow, you know, for additional things like the bike parking as well as carpooling, access to public transit to help reduce those parking numbers. So, so we're not having as much concrete and that we are having more green space. So, we've, we've made those adjustments as well, you know, with the site and, and what would originally have been required. And just want to make sure they've got plenty of parking for, for employees.
No, I understand that. That's the question I was going to ask, but that, you know, that's fine. I'm a, I'm more of a fan of parking minimums. You know, that's kind of the way I lean where, you know, only what you need, you know, during peak hours and more green space to care, carry that runoff and, and limit the flooding that would happen. So, anyway.
Can you, can you say, so what's your motion? So, what's the motion?
May I make a suggestion to, for everyone to consider? Sorry to stir the pot even more, but it sounds like what, what my colleagues have brought up are more questions and the motion to eliminate some of the parking spaces and potentially create more green space is, is just one attempt to respond to a concern. Would it, would it be better for the whole to table the vote, have it go back to planning commission, and then we, we would have to go back and re, redo the initial motion. But that way, the myriad of issues that have come up would have an opportunity to go through the process. And that, and instead of just amending to, to add another, you know.
So, we, we'd have to have the original motion withdrawn, correct? Unless.
Well, I do know that there was a lot of conversation on the planning commission and yeah, they were struggling with a lot of these issues. And that's why the vote turned out the way it did. I don't see a value of sending it back. We would end up having the final say anyway. So, yeah, I would motion to amend and second. Whatever, I mean, whatever the vote turns out, it is what it is, but I wanted to get that out there.
Okay, so you want to motion to amend to?
I want to make a motion to amend the original motion to add a condition to the site plan that the parking, all the parking near the entrance be eliminated and the gray space be replaced, or the gray infrastructure be replaced with green infrastructure.
How is that accessible?
Is this going to be permeable concrete? I mean, there's concrete that, that it's perme- permeable. I can't say the word. That, that the water, some water, not all water, but water soaks through, which is often used to help with flood control. What's the plan here? Is it in the plan?
That, I'm not sure if we know the materials being used. But I can just say when we're, as part of the site plan review, the stormwater detention is accounted for.
Okay.
So, that is reviewed by our city engineers and it is accounted for in that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then, Don, I would.
Can I just clarify with Councilmember Urban? Have you seconded her motion? Thank you.
Mayor, can I?
Sure.
Can I just comment that?
Give me a second.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, I mean, do we trust what the, what city staff have done or not? I mean, most of the time, council, I hear us saying, we need to trust our city staff to do their job. They are the engineers. They are the, the planners. We are not. And I hear us throwing these things out now. And they've done due diligence here. This has come before us once before, and now it's being booted out. The idea is to boot it out again. I, I just don't understand that. And as far as, you know, there being enough parking spaces and so forth, it's the only coffee shop in Ward Seven. The only one.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just was going to ask, Kevin, as Public Works Director, John is working with Melissa's team of what you heard from council, and, and the goal here is to put them on firm ground so that they can make an informed decision. Is there anything that you heard that was asked or commented to that you would like to add any additional information? And then to the developer, Corporation Council said that you can't introduce anything new, but between the path, you know, the pathway between the original proposal that Plan Commission turned down and to what council has in their packets tonight to consider, is there anything that you would like to comment to, again, guarding against adding any new information? Don't, don't add anything. Just.
Respond to the comments.
Just comment to anything that you feel like you would like to say as a developer between Plan Commission denial and the point that we're at tonight before council.
I think I can address that pretty quickly. Your, your issues with the additional parking or the lack of, there's forty-one spots that were, was in the original site plan. We've reduced five of those, or actually, we've reduced actually more with the addition of the drive lane, the skip, the pass-by lane, which was an operational issue to begin with that Starbucks typically likes to have in their projects. This location, they did want additional parking. So, they actually gave us the leeway to, to do a project without the drive lane and add parking, which again was at forty-one. So, what we've since done with the planning commission comments, we have reduced the parking of the five that was to the west of the entry access road end. We have reduced that. That becomes green space. What we also had to do is reduce some, reduce some parking in the main parking field because of the additional drive lane. The good news is, is we've actually impervious to, to your question. It's all asphalt. It's all asphalt with a concrete drive lane. So, it's, it's not pervious. It's all impervious. But we have reduced the amount of impervious because of the reduction of the parking to the west of the, the access lane. So, from a net, we've actually reduced the overall net area of impervious with this new design.
Thank you. Okay. So, where were we? So, we have a motion to amend in a second, correct? Okay. All right. Oh, did you want to add something, Kevin? Sorry.
I'll just say that engineering staff, you know, has reviewed everything as far as, you know, traffic drainage and so forth and has, you know, approved moving forward with this. The only other thing that, you know, I'll note is that part of the site is in the floodplain, as was noted. And, you know, but the building itself is set up high enough. It doesn't affect the floodplain. The floodplain's been managed appropriately, so the net change in, in flood volume is, is neutral. And, you know, at, at such time as a site floods, water itself is impervious. So, you know, it, it's, you can say before the big flood, it might contribute a little bit more to runoff, but in, in the actual realm of the flooding, it's not changing the, the flooding itself as far as, you know, making it worse or, you know, higher elevation, that type of thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, we're voting on the amendment?
Correct, yes.
Do you have a link?
Councilmember Crumpler, can I get you to refresh, please? Thank you.
Okay, so the item fails and there are how many names?
Seven.
Seven names, okay.
All right. Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Crable, Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Crumpler, Councilmember Montney.
Okay, so now we're back to the original motion, right? And did you want to make a comment?
No, no, not, not at all.
Oh, all right.
Sorry, I didn't realize my button was on.
Yeah. Okay, so can you put up the link then?
So, the original motion, could you just review what that?
Is to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Having an eventful night, Councilmember Urban and Councilmember Bowlin, can you please refresh?
Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. And moving on to item eight D. D as in done. Consideration and action on an ordinance amending chapter two, chapter sixteen, and chapter twenty-three of the Bloomington City Code relating to deputy city managers as requested by the administration department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know the council has been prepped with this request that I'm making tonight and would recommend approval, but for the community, why this ask? And why I feel that there is a need. When I stepped into the organization five years ago, I'm going to use the word more in a different context than I used it earlier. And that is my expectation of more. The department directors in every single case, we have twelve divisions or departments within the city organization, and I have a total of fifteen direct reports that report to me that the deputy city manager, Tyus, is very essential in helping manage those. The expectation that I shared is one that I knew that early on the organization could support two deputy city managers. In fact, it had that at one point several years ago. This is an organization of six hundred and fifty-plus full-time employees, nearly eleven hundred if you count part-time and seasonal. The expectation again of the individual departments and the directors that run those departments is such that we know that we have the capacity and the bandwidth and my expectation, city manager, to provide more. But there is an accountability component to this. And And with a a second deputy city manager, it will increase, I believe, the efficiency and the ability for us to keep up and maintain the expectations of the city organization. And I'll take any additional questions if there are any, thank you.
Okay. Good, Councilmember Becker.
More more a comment than a question, um, as as City Manager Gleason said, we've talked about this. Um, he's presented the idea. Knowing a little bit about managing people at the level he's talking about, I find the the idea of a span of control of fifteen kind of silly, um, so I do agree that there is a need for this person. Um, and I and I think that this person can help us to, use your word, achieve more and get more results. But what I'm gonna say, I hope, and what I've said to City Manager Gleason before is, I want this person to achieve more accountability across the organization. I want them to help achieve more efficiency across the organization, so that the next budget we come to, we can say, yes, we are completing all these capital projects, but we're doing it in a more efficient way because we have a stronger management team controlling all of the planning processes and working together, so I believe it's necessary. I'll support it, but I'm supporting it with the idea in mind that this is about adding efficiency operationally and effectively driving costs down and driving efficiency up to achieve the right results on these projects, it isn't just adding a headcount. So, that's my two cents.
Okay, um, I think we have Councilmember Motley, Crumpler, and then, um, Emig and bear in mind the time here, so we have three thirty-three minutes and thirty seconds.
I'd just like to build on the comments that have been made, changing a reporting relationship doesn't in itself create any efficiency. Changing a reporting relationship and narrowing the span of control in this case can certainly help with bandwidth, uh, but a framework for accountability in a systematic way of managing the operations, I believe, is a gap um, that exists everywhere, not just here in our community, there's always a gap in terms of the opportunity to improve how work is done. I I would highly recommend the person who is selected for this role, should this be approved, uh, have a development plan to build capabilities in operational management and in performance measures so that we can, to Councilmember Becker's point, manage the organization with more confidence and more fact-based.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I agree, um, I really appreciated Councilmember Becker's points, uh, you know, talking about efficiency and accountability, and I think there's a large um, potential for a second city manager to do that. I also agree with, um, Councilmember Mo- excuse me, Councilmember Montney's call for a development plan, I think that's critical for this person. And then I would like to, and it seems to me that this is a potential for an organization, but excuse me, an organizational shift that is much more um, in line with a distributive, um, shared model of leadership, which I think will be real positive for the community, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Emig.
Thank you, um, I just want to add that that I think this will improve responsiveness because, um, and and I would say the abundance of what I have observed and experienced over the last four years is is constituents um, really appreciate and reasonably ask for a certain level of responsiveness from city staff. And I think that this configuration will make that much more likely to happen.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Crable?
Nothing here, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, alright, so I think we can go ahead and vote.
Actually, I apologize, um, we don't have a motion or a second.
Don't, we don't? I I thought we did, yeah, okay, sorry, okay. I'm tired, um, so who made a motion? Okay, Ward, and then second? Okay, Crumpler, there you go.
Okay, it's ready.
Okay, ready. Oh, I need to get more sleep. Okay, the item passes, there are no names to announce. Awesome, uh, we're gonna move on to city managers' discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, I'll be very brief, but I do have a couple of slides and then an additional comment about Committee of the Whole next week. Uh, Slow Art Day on Route sixty-six, this is April fifteenth, uh, not this coming, but, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, it is this coming uh, Saturday, and next slide, please. Farmer's Market opening day is, uh, May sixth, and that is, uh, here in the downtown. We'll be shifting to our spring and summer events, uh, so very much looking forward to that. Third slide, please. Red Carpet Corridor, uh, festival goers will enjoy savory barbecue, delicious drinks, and class classic cars, and that's coming up on, uh, May sixth, downtown Bloomington. Uh, this will be a very good, uh, event if you're into food, live music, and, uh, classic cars. Next slide, please. This is a biggie, uh, right here, uh, thank you, dispatchers, uh, you've got Chief Simmington in the back row, you've got Chief West with the Fire Department. Uh, the Dispatch Communication Center is, uh, run by Darren Wolf, and we have a tremendous, uh, communication center. So this is the week that we formally, uh, celebrate, uh, what they do, uh, which I know we do that every single day. Uh, but a little, you know, additional comment about our communication center. Uh, they receive, uh, recognition awards at state and the national level, individual, uh, telecommunications, uh, receive that. And I know what I'm talking about here, uh, having a public safety background, they truly are worth their weight in gold. And truly are that lifeline for the, uh, community member that a lot of times is having their worst day, and we're trying to, um, uh, get the the resources, police or fire EMS to them to, uh, assist them. So this is their week, and, uh, hats off to them. I think that's it, Catherine. The only thing that I was gonna add is, uh, next week's Committee of the Whole, uh, it's gonna be an evening of, uh, presentations. Uh, we're gonna have a library project update, an O'Neill Pool project update. Uh, Michael Hurt, our, uh, diversity and and equity and clues inclusion manager is going to present on the minority business enterprise with the expectation or hope that that will come before, uh, this council on April twenty-fourth for adoption, but a presentation first. And then also bringing back the ADA presentation, hopefully again with the, uh, adoption before this council on April twenty-fourth. And then lastly, uh, Connect Transit is going to come, uh, while we, uh, approve the budget this evening for our portion of, uh, Connect Transit fund funding. David Braun will come back, uh, as he did last year, and present specifically to how those funds will be used in, uh, their budget. And that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and and the mayor's discussion, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Donna Bowlin for filling in for me, March twenty-fourth, while I was in Italy, great trip, um, again, great, great country. Uh, it made me, uh, realize even more the importance of, uh, historic preservation. They have a lot of it, uh, it was amazing, so would recommend that to anyone. And I also learned that not all olive oil are made equal, so it was fantastic. Um, and then I wanted to, uh, highlight, uh, an event that happened this Saturday in downtown Bloomington called Holy Moly, which was a, a, uh, an event, uh, celebrating the holy um, uh, festival, uh, and it's a, it's an Indian celebration. Uh, the the wonderful thing about it is that it was, uh, put together by, uh, uh, Southeast Asian students um, uh, at the NCHS, so it was their event. Uh, I think they had a little bit of support from the city of Bloomington in terms of, uh, you know, barricades and and things like that, and and then, uh, their advisors, uh, at their school, but it it was fantastic, people had a lot of fun. And they're hoping to make it an annual event, so look forward to that, uh, next year, and they've already inspired others, uh, to to do the same in downtown Bloomington, so I think, uh, you're going to see a lot more, uh, events in downtown Bloomington. And I think, oh, I also want to, I know we had an election, uh, last week, uh, so I also want to congratulate, uh, the incoming, uh, council members, and looking forward to, uh, working with all of them, so. That is it, then, uh, do we have, um, council comments? Okay, Councilmember Ward?
I know it's late, and so I won't take a lot, a lot of time, but, um, I do want to, um, speak on behalf of, um, certainly Councilmember Bowlin and myself, but I think probably Chief Simmington and maybe even Sergeant Nowers as well, who all of us were were hosted by the Islamic Center of McLean County um, a week ago this past Sunday for, um, a Ramadan iftar, which if you aren't familiar with what that is, it's a breaking of a fast, um, for the day anyway. Um, the ongoing Ramadan fast continues, but we were, we were hosted in fine style. Um, it was, it was really a very lovely evening, and I personally learned a lot and and really appreciated the opportunity to spend time with with people in the community and, um, felt felt very honored to have been invited to that. Um, actually, by the new, one of our newest members of our cultural commission, um, Mr. Faisal Rashid. So thank you, thank you, thank you to Mr. Rashid, thank you to the Imam, and to the people of the Islamic Center of McLean County for hosting us so well.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I want to add to that was the hospitality was just outstanding for someone that had fasted for eighteen hours, and then had this smile on their face and served us with, um, graciousness. And for being, um, a different culture, there's so much similarity, and I just love that. And one of the, all the women got gifts, we all got beautiful scarves to take home, and I I that just speaks to the hospitality, so I appreciate being invited.
Thank you. Okay, I think, uh, with that said, then I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you all very much, see you next meeting. Oh, yes, hi.